Well, we learned all about the Parks and Recreation Department. What goes into running the parks and the park budget, what kinds of services Parks and Rec provides. We did a park designing activity, so we divide up into five.
Yeah, my car's not all that big. I mean, it's a truck.
Evening. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, November 3rd, 2016 Reno Planning Commission meeting. And if you would all join Commissioner Levis in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance to defy the United States of America, to the Republic which is standing on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Paula Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Troy Schneider is absent. Kevin Wieske.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to item number three, public comment, I would like to say at this juncture that item number 7.3, which is LDC 16-00083 Somerset Village 6, the public hearing for that item will be continued. We will not hear the item tonight. If you are here to make public comment on that item, you'll have the opportunity to do so on when we get to that item. There won't be any sort of discussion or questions or presentation on it, though, and it will be continued to the December meeting, so you'll also have the opportunity to make a public comment and see all of the presentation and discussion at that point. And we will renotice. So having said that, we will move into public comment. This is a general public comment item. If you'd like to still make a public comment on that item, you can do so here. I do have one public comment card. It has a case number on it from David Mello. David, if you'd like to make your comment now, we'd certainly like to hear it. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have three public comment cards for the Somerset. They want to do their public comment now, or if they want to wait until...
Okay. Thank you. So Ken McNeil, if you'd like to make your comment now, that would be great. Otherwise, you can wait until 7.3. We've got a few things to get through until we get there, though. It's up to you. Well, why don't you come on up now? Why don't we work through these now, if you'd like, and then we can let you folks carry on with your evening.
Okay. I wasn't real sure of the procedure, and thanks for clarifying. Well, my name is Ken McNeil. I live at 1990 Evergreen Ridge Court. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Planning Staff. Since the Somerset Village 6 application is going to be pulled from tonight's agenda, this gives all interested parties time to resolve the issue of the trailhead placement. It is my understanding the city has already received legal advice regarding the agreement which places the trailhead at a different location. Since the tentative map approval is a public process, we have the right to know if the city disagrees with any portion of this agreement. If the city does not disagree with the terms of the agreement, then I feel the trailhead should be placed in the parcel identified in the agreement. I'm requesting tonight a meeting with the City of Reno Planning staff before this project is considered again by the Planning Commission. The meeting requested is to ensure the trailhead is placed in the location per the agreement and the tentative map is amended to reflect that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ken, up next, I have Pam McNeil. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, City Staff. My name is Pam McNeil, 1990 Evergreen Ridge. I am a member of the Ward 5 NAB, and I've completed the RCI courses. I am a strong supporter of the city, the policies of the city, the various departments, including fire and police. We bought a home in 2002 in the old Northwest. One of the things that the city told us is that they would be taking out the sewer cleanout and removing it out of our backyard and putting it out into the street. They said to compensate for all the disruption, they'd be putting in sod and sprinkler system. And we're from Southern California, and we all said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, that's going to happen." And that is exactly what happened. They did everything they said they would, and they kept in constant contact with it. It was great. And I've told the story at least five times because it was a good introduction to the city of Reno, and we've really enjoyed living here. Recently, because of the Toll Brothers project and because of our proximity to the project, we've been working with the city staff, representatives from Toll Brothers, a lot of people. I mean, I could go on and list who we've talked to regarding the project. Our home is adjacent, so we do have a special passion. We do respect and agree that Toll Brothers owns the project, the land, and they have a right to develop their property, and we are hopeful that they will do this responsibly. Derek Wilson of Rubicon did call us this morning, mid-morning today, to tell us this project was being pulled from the agenda. He relayed he had talked to city staff yesterday. Claudia just left me a message, a phone message, saying that, yes, they had talked about it yesterday. It had to be done before 5:00 PM. So although we have met often and openly, not with anything under our sleeves, no games to play, we've met with everybody openly, including city staff. I had to call this afternoon, I don't know what time, I forgot to look, but it was 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock this afternoon, and I had to call and write to staff to ask for this information. You know, Derek told us, I would expect the city would have told us yesterday. Sending an email doesn't take long. I am very, very disappointed at this non-notification by staff on this. That's all I need to say, I'm just very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is from Donald Moore.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, my name is Donald Moore. I live at 1435 Meridian Ranch Drive in Cedar Canyon. My wife and I moved there 10 years ago, and we just love the area and we love the concept that Somerset has provided us as far as living situation and just the whole feeling of the community there. I don't know why Toll Brothers has taken so long to develop this particular subject area, but I do know that critical issues have arisen simply because the villages around the subject development are established. So we have to look at now other issues that Toll Brothers needs to be aware of. It is, I'm very grateful that the item has been pulled from the agenda tonight. And it is my hope that representatives of the City of Reno, Toll Brothers, perhaps county representatives, perhaps a board member or two from each association, Cedar Canyon and Somerset, along with the citizens who live nearly next door to this development, that we can all get together, continue discussions. We know this project's going to continue forward. We know it's going to continue forward. But at least having open dialogue and having Toll Brothers aware of our issues that we have, we want that opportunity to address them. So thank you for your time, and we will continue this probably next month and present, you know, other information for you folks to consider. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment at this point? See none, I will close the public comments, and we will move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes. I will ask for any changes to the minutes or a motion if they all looked good to you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, so moved.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion, have a second?
Commissioner Reno, second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to item number five, City Council Liaison Reports.
I have no comments from Councilwoman Brackus.
Okay. Then we will move on to item number six, which is the master plan update.
Cool. All right. Good evening. Good to be with you again. I'm Matt Prosser with Economic and Planning Systems, just as a reminder. I'm working with staff and Clariant Associates on the update of the master plan. And so I'm here tonight to walk through the fiscal impact analysis findings that we had for the key choices, key policy choices related to the master plan. So as a reminder and an overview, we developed these key choices and presented them to you all in the City Council on July 13th, Joint Leadership Meeting. And we identified these issues, the key policy choices, through our work on the housing demand and employment demand forecast and needs assessment, as well as the large amount of community outreach and surveying that had occurred in both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of this project. And the ultimate goal is to work through the key choices with you all, and then ultimately bring those choices back to the City Council on December 13th to have them weigh in. And I believe in about a week before then, you all have a chance to sort of develop your own recommendations. And so this analysis, this presentation, I'm sorry, is one component to that overall consideration of these key policy choices that you will be weighing and discussing in your meeting in December. So... And then shortly, just a little overview of the fiscal impact analysis. It's work done to complement the market demand study, provide an understanding of the impact of land use choices on your budget as a community, and was used to test different land use alternatives. So for three of the five key choices area, we identified a potential land use alternative that would address the issue that that choice was related to. And so for those three, we developed some alternatives to measure the fiscal impact. And ultimately, the goal was to see, you know, what would happen if the city decided this pattern, and how is that different from what we have today on the books? And some important considerations as we go through these findings is that ultimately every community, and I think this is definitely true in Reno, too, the goal is to have a balance of uses that meets future demand. And so it's not a practice necessarily of picking one use over another just because it may have a greater fiscal benefit. It's understanding that there needs to be this mixture and understanding how the different uses relate to each other. And so keep that in mind as we walk through this, as you'll see positives and negatives from different alternatives, is the consideration that this is sort of a symbiotic thing that works together, and we're just trying to isolate the different analysis. And then also, ultimately, the city only has control over certain revenue sources. And so whilst there's some things that are just sort of out of your hands when you're considering fiscal issues. So what we wanted to do as a baseline is we took your current zoning, your current land use designations, and we applied our demand study to those designations and wanted to see what the future impact in 20 years, in year 20, what the net annual fiscal impact to the general fund, the street fund, and then what we did is we added those together to a total net impact, just to see where we're at. And so what we found is that just under, if you didn't change anything, you kept the same map, there's a benefit, a fiscal benefit annually for both the general fund and the streets fund. And so we're in good shape. And so as we consider other land use alternatives, it's good to remember that the baseline is we're headed in a good direction, and changes to that might necessarily mean bad things. It just means it might slightly change what we have for the baseline. And then another reminder is we broke the city into four quadrants, north, central, west, and south, understanding that different parts of the city have a greater cost to provide services than others because of just logistics related to those areas. Fire protection is one specifically that varies differently in different quadrants. And it also gave us a way to sort of test different alternatives without having to look at the entire city and making a ton of assumptions for the entire city just to do this analysis. So it helped us isolate on the key areas that we're focused on. So the first key choice being employment. As a reminder, the key choices here are should the city play an active role in shaping employment growth? And as part of that, the land use-related considerations are the next two. And so should the city support the retention and expansion of lands designated for industrial uses by either identifying additional lands or trying to limit incompatible uses near industrially zone areas? And then lastly, should the city consider converting some land use designations to industrial and mixed employment to expand options? So with that in mind, oh, just another reminder of our findings in the employment demand study, that for office and retail uses, we have plenty of land in the city. There's ample supply, but for industrial, that's not necessarily the case. There's anywhere between 30 to 60 years of supply left in the state just on sort of an aggregate total number. And it's also very important to understand that 60% of that land is actually within the Reno-Stead Airport area. And so, and a significant portion in addition to the Reno-Stead land is in the North Valleys. And so what we did is we developed some alternatives for the north quadrant with this in mind, realizing that this area is really, the area within the city, you have a large amount of, or a significant amount of vacant capacity for industrial development. And so the baseline alternative, which is up now, is what you have currently on the books is the portion of area along North Virginia Street and Stead Boulevard is zone mixed use. And really, it's kind of allows anything to go in there. And I assume you often have cases coming in where you're seeing a mixture of industrial and multifamily residential uses that are wanting to go next to each other or... of industrial and multifamily residential uses that are wanting to go next to each other or perhaps on the same parcel. And so it sort of, has led to sort of a hodgepodge land use pattern up there. And also potentially could be constraining your supply of industrial land. If you have more residential development occurring in areas next to where industrial would want to go, that could create compatibility issues. And so what we did is we, we identified two potential alternatives in, in concept that could address that. And so alternative one, it's the idea of converting the mixed use land into either industrial or mixed employment designations, which are basically employment-only designations. And the second alternative is a mixture of designating the mixed use areas into industrial and also allowing for pockets of mixed use and multifamily residential. And what these alternatives do is they better align your land use pattern with market demand in a more specific way. As you, as you've heard, do we have a, a large amount of capacity for retail and office development? And that's a, a component of a mixed use that could go in this area, but there's way too much land compared to the demand. And so to make a better utilization of the land, converting some of that land into employment uses or potentially just designating it for only residential could better align with market demand. So what we did is we figured out the, the capacity of acreage for each development type, for each alternative. And then we used our demand study to estimate what the potential capture would be underneath that. And then really what the result is, creating more land for industrial development creates more capacity, obviously. It means the capture can be higher in those areas. And that's the main difference between the alternatives is, alternative one has a lot more industrial than the baseline. And so does alternative two, and then the difference between alternative one and two is the capacity to capture residential, whereas alternative one does not have that. And so looking at these alternatives, we wanted to consider five things. Alignment with market demand, what the ongoing fiscal impact is, what are some major capital investments that would be needed to make these, these alternatives work? What do we hear from community preferences? And then what's the consistency with the master plan goals? So I'm going to talk about the first three bullet points for each of these different alternatives. So, in terms of alignment with market demand with these alternatives, both the alternatives reduce the amount of commercial and mixed use land, which provides a better mixture of land that matches with demand. And ultimately, hopefully it provides more direction to the market, providing developers and landowners the understanding of where the city wants certain types of uses, so that they understand where to look when they're looking for different projects. And then the other point related to market demand is how critical Reno-Sted Airport is to your industrial capacity base. It's, as I said, it's 60% of the land in the city that's designated industrial. And, and the Reno-Sted Airport has a vision for attracting, you know, industrial uses, users specifically advanced manufacturing aerospace jobs. And they want to be, you know, competitive in trying to attract high-tech, knowledge-based jobs. And so with that in mind, it's, it's a critical piece that, that needs to be utilized and is a big project. So it obviously has some infrastructure investment that's needed to make it happen. But considering the alternatives, alternative one provides additional capacity in the near term as Reno-Sted comes on and starts to capture more development. And so does alternative two, but it also has the potential allow for more housing. So we looked at the fiscal impact of these two alternatives compared to the baseline. And what they do is they create a huge benefit to both the general fund, but also to the streets fund annually. And there isn't, in terms of the total net, there isn't much of a difference. It just, it is kind of dependent on which fund it creates a benefit within. And so really the message here is that employment land uses are fiscally beneficial to the city, especially industrial and office uses. And so making sure that you have adequate supply and you're investing and trying to create areas to attract jobs is a key component of maintaining your fiscal health. And so these alternatives don't have much difference in terms of their ultimate fiscal impact. It's just a matter of if you're wanting to protect more industrial land, what, or do you want to try to allow a mixture of uses by also trying to protect industrial lands? So we also looked at needed capital investments. There is need for increased sewer treatment capacity at some point, regardless of whatever alternative we picked here. There's a short Phase One, a short-term Phase One upgrade that's about $6 million, which will increase capacity, and then a larger Phase Two upgrade that's 50, 60 million. Ultimately, that will create a lot more capacity down the road, and these will be needed. And so in my mind, it's just a matter of when. And certain, if you're, depending on the market, it's just a matter of how quickly the, the market develops land up there that pushes the needs. And then something that we want to explore with staff going forward is ways to be proactive about trying to fund and plan for these investments. Other things to consider, there, there are interchange improvements along 395 and roadway improvements that are needed to support increased industrial development and residential development. And RTC, which is in control of regional roads, is well aware of this, has two studies underway and has capacity improvements within their long-term capital plan. And so they're already thinking about this as well. So, in terms of the land, employment land use alternatives, any clarifications, additional information or concerns?
Commissioners, questions? Nope, I don't think so.
All right.
Means you're doing a great job.
Hopefully. So, next is housing key choices. And so, the, the, the key choices here are should we diversify or establish central neighborhoods to better match demand? And so try to create a more, a greater mixture of different housing types within our central neighborhoods, which are for the most part predominantly single-family. And then the second question related to housing is should we try to diversify future projects in the outer neighborhoods to align with demand? And so the sort of sub-bolts or sub-considerations to that question is should the city actively work with the development community to try to increase diversity and unbuilt PUDs? I mean, most of the, the vacant capacity you have is within these PUDs, and it would be, have to be a partnership with the development community to try to create a greater demand compared to what they have on the books today. And then going forward, future PUDs, should the city require, incent, or encourage a mixture of housing in these projects going forward? And so as, just a reminder, the city's capacity, their supply of land for residential development is primarily for standard lot, single-family homes, so that's two to, I think, seven DUs per acre? Is that correct? And that's where the majority of the demand is. But as you can see, the, the red line is the estimate of demand based on our housing study. And you can see the big disconnect between the two. And so, there's other areas that, that have potential deficits that may, you know, may lend itself to, to some alternative designations that could address these issues. So, we looked at two different, all, two different scenarios for creating a greater mixture of housing. First was looking in the central neighborhoods, and then the second was within the outer neighborhoods. And where we looked there was the west and north quadrants. So first focusing on the central neighborhoods. Baseline on the left is a conceptual diagram of what you have today. You basically have single-family neighborhoods that butt up against more mixed-use areas. An alternative would be to introduce more mixed residential designations that allow for more of a transition to where the single-family neighborhoods can start to transition to be a little more dense, perhaps have a mixture of duplexes, townhomes, that transitions into a higher intensity and higher density mixed-use area. And so what we found, looking at the fiscal impacts of this sort of approach, is that anytime you start to switch single-family to multifamily, you start to create a little bit of a net negative impact on the general fund, mainly because just on average, multifamily units are worth less than single-family homes. Now, that's not true for every project. There are multifamily projects that have really expensive units, and the fiscal balance is probably different on those. But on average, that's what would occur. But at the same time, your streets fund starts to get a greater benefit because you're having to have less roadways serving these developments that you need to maintain. And so there, again, it's that, that push and pull between different land uses. When you start to play with the mixtures, they start to have different impacts and benefits and negatives. So, that was the finding here. But on that, this approach of trying to have a greater mixture of housing that matches more with demand, ultimately on a total, total net impact basis, has a greater impact to the city. So we also looked, as I mentioned, to the, at the outer neighborhoods. And so we developed two alternatives, looking in the north and west quadrants. And so the baseline is largely the pattern that you, you kind of see today, largely single-family. I think 78% of the capacity in, in these quadrants is for single-family standard lot housing. And so alternative one is looking at a shift, you know, sort of a, I should say, actually, alternative two matches with our citywide projection for housing demand by type. And then alternative one is sort of the compromise between the two. So what we did is we, as you can see, the baseline, what's designated and vacant today, the far right is, matches exactly with the man study in terms of citywide. And then in these sort of out, outlying areas, what's a greater mixture that's sort of in-between is the middle alternative or alternative one. You can see the breakdown by different types here in these, in these conceptual alternatives. And so the goal here is to provide a broader mix. One, alternative one creates a mix that I think is, is more likely in the north and west quadrants, but it does need changes to current land use designations and PUDs to become a reality. And so that, that partnership is key. If the city wants to try to create a broader mix in some of these outlining areas, it's, it's going to have to be some sort of strategy incentive approach with the development community to have them relook at their, their existing PUDs to consider providing more housing. And so it's risky for developers to do that. It, it opened, reopens their projects to scrutiny. And so finding a way, the city wants to, if you all want to, to reduce that risk for them, if it's achieving a land use pattern that is better for the city, it, it may be a worthwhile endeavor. So something to consider. So looking at the net fiscal impact of these alternatives, as you can see, with the high amount of single-family homes on the baseline, you have a pretty high general fund net positive impact, mainly just due to the average value of single-family homes comparative to other home types. But you have a, a lot of streets you're creating to serve a, a relatively low number of housing, which creates a, a negative drain on your streets fund. Now, the alternative one creates a benefit for bo, benefit for both. And then if you went to sort of the outlying aggressive scenario of matching exactly with the city demand study, it flips that, that benefit and negative impact between the general fund and the streets fund, to where now the general fund is negative and the street fund is positive. In terms of needed capacity investments, we already mentioned the sewer capacity issues in the north value, the north valleys, north quadrant. And then a major consideration fiscally for growth in the west and north quadrants is fire service. The way that fire is provided and impacts, is impacted by land use, is that fire stations have a set fire service area. And they can serve as many households or businesses generally within that fire service area as long as they can maintain their response time to fires. As soon as you have development that starts to occur out of the response time area, it triggers the need for new, new fire stations. And what you have in the west quadrant and the north valleys is you have, you know, you have topography issues. You have sort of leapfrogging developments in some ways. And what that does is it starts to create more demand for fire services, but you're paying a lot per unit to serve fire because these fire service areas are only serving, you know, a certain amount of housing or businesses. And so something to consider. Capital cost for a new fire station is approximately four and a half million. That's excluding land costs. So that's something the city has to come up with if we're approving development outside of fire service areas. And then the ongoing cost for a station is $2 million per year. And so that'll increase the fiscal impact if a fire station is needed in these quadrants. And so what, after talking to fire, what we found is we're likely going to need new stations, both in Verde and the western areas, and as well in the north valleys in some potential projects there coming further up 395, that will create the need for new stations. And that will increase the cost for the city to serve these areas and increase, lower the net fiscal impact for the general fund in those areas. So with that, any clarifications, additional information or concerns related to the housing land use alternatives?
Commissioners, questions? Mr. Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You addressed fire, but you haven't addressed police department. How does, how does the fiscal impact, isn't it similar to how it impacts fire?
It isn't, actually. And so fire is, is interesting that it's very driven geographically because of the response times from the fire station. So generally, a fire engine is, goes out to a call, comes back to the fire station and waits for its next call. Police generally, they are just going from call to call. And so they aren't going back all the way to a substation or the main station. They're just sort of out in their precinct or ward that they're covering. And so what drives cost for police is just the increase of people and activity. And so it, it, it sort of doesn't matter where in the city it occurs. It's just the increased development increases the need for police. And so, and when you're looking at, at land uses and the different land uses and how they impact that, I, I think generally what we found was retail created more of a cost because, I would say, so police costs, I would say in terms of response to calls are about 50/50 split between responses to a specific business or home for an issue, and then the other 50 are traffic. And so uses like retail that generate a ton of traffic, they drive a lot of police costs because there's a lot of roads. And that's the way our model looked at it, was basically we split out the calls and the cost between traffic-related and sort of place-based related. And then we ran a GIS analysis to compare where those calls related to different land uses and then provided per unit or per square foot cost related to that. And so, but the end of the day, it's really more development drives more police need. And where it is in the city is less important than the fire conversation. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but it also brings up a second question, and that is because about 10 years ago, the city was discussing, and that was a couple of city managers before now and a, and a couple of police chiefs before now regarding substations at critical areas around town to shorten up response times for major incidents. Also giving the police officers working in area, in a given area of the, of the city, an office space or a temporary holding space that they don't currently have now. In some of these cases, it's a, a 30-minute to 45-minute drive even.
Back, back into the central area.
Yeah, back to the main station, even, even under emergency, you know, conditions.
Well, we, so what I heard when we met with your police department, and it was, it was probably about a year ago to discuss this, is that they had moved recently away from this idea of doing the substations. And I think, I think in, I think we should clarify this. But I think it's because largely they're able to do more of their work within their car on a laptop than they used to before because of the connectivity of the internet and things like that. And so the need for that office space has gone away. But I think that's something we should clarify. But it, our analysis is based on this assumption that there isn't this need to come all the way back in to do these things. And so the geography wasn't a, a big driver.
Okay, thank you. I'll look forward to that update in the future.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions? Matt, I have a quick question on the, you showed two different scenarios. One was sort of a, an outlying development scenario. One was a central neighborhood scenario with, you know, the different alternatives. How does your model take into account areas that are essentially greenfield development versus redevelopment areas? And does it incorporate some sort of timeline into, you know, when these scenarios will be achieved?
Yeah, so what we did is we, we developed the alternatives and based on our demand study, we spread that development over time based on what we saw. But it doesn't necessarily vary between outlying, it doesn't make assumptions of the central area will grow faster than the outlying area. It sort of kept that consistent. And so, we, we didn't make this assumption, but there could be an argument that brand-new roads have a different impact than existing roads in terms of how quickly they would need cer, you know, repair, things like that. But it's, it's a very hard thing to try to get at in this type of model. And we would be making assumptions, I'm sure that would be correct without some good evidence. But yeah, in essence, no is the answer, but something we considered.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. All right. Last, last key policy choice, infill and redevelopment. Sorry for, for taking. Sorry for taking so much time. So, this key choice is where should the city prioritize locations for infill and redevelopment? So, what we've heard through outreach efforts from the city council, from you all, is that the city is interested and would like to promote redevelopment and infill in its urban core. And revitalizing downtown is, you know, a big key. And so, we wanted to measure what the impact of this would be if we were able to capture more housing in our central area. And then, we played with where within the central area would this development could go. And so, it's a matter of what, what does the city want to prioritize? Downtown and UNR regional centers or your TOD corridors or some combination? And so, what we developed was the baseline is what you have today, existing capacity as well as the existing capture of housing you had just recently. And so, not a ton of infill capacity or infill development, but where it has been occurring has been largely more in the neighborhood areas as opposed to perhaps downtown in terms of housing. And so, alternative one wanted to assume that if the city is proactive about this and makes investments and potential other strategies, they're able to capture greater demand of housing downtown. If we prioritize it in just a few centers or spread out among the centers and corridors, what would be the difference? And so, that's what these alternatives explore. And so, as you can see in the baseline, recent capture would really result in about forty-five-hundred units captured in the central quadrant. Now, in our work, in the housing demand study as well as working on the downtown action plan, we think that there's opportunity for greater capture. We think that the city could capture about a quarter of new housing units in the central quadrant based on our demand estimates. And so, that would, that would equal about eighty-one-hundred units in the central area. And so, we allocated those in different ways. The first alternative is primarily just in downtown in the UNR regional center and then some additional in other areas. Alternative two looks at spreading that among downtown and TOD corridors. And so, in terms of alignment with market demand, what are our considerations? Capturing more housing in centers and quarters will require redevelopment of existing uses and parcels in many cases. In downtown, the capacity or supply of potential land for redevelopment is fairly high, but in areas like the UNR regional center, it's less so. And so, infill is, is a component, but redevelopment would have to be more of a major component. So, if you want to prioritize and encourage redevelopment in the urban core, certain areas redevelopment is more of the path as opposed to just an infill type thing. More housing in centers and quarters is likely to drive demand for more jobs in non-residential uses. And as you can see, with the growth of more housing in midtown, it's sort of a symbiotic relationship, but you're starting to see more businesses and retail and sort of a vibrant area. And that's what we're finding for a lot of more modern office environments that employers are seeking out. They want areas that are mixed use and vibrant. And so, housing is a key component of that. For a lot of downtown strategies, housing is often a leading component because it creates more people and more vibrancy. An office is often a following use that's driven by that vibrancy. So, if you're thinking about revitalization, housing is usually sort of a start as well as entertainment uses. And then, last consideration, urban infill and redevelopment is more expensive. Land prices are higher, it costs more to do denser housing products, a lot of that has to do with structured parking. And so, as you think of encouraging that, you have to understand that there's barriers in terms of feasibility related to the higher costs. And so, it could be a potential strategy or consideration is to finding ways to reduce those costs somehow to encourage more infill development. So, we looked at these scenarios in terms of the fiscal impact. And what they do is they generate a greater net fiscal negative impact on the general fund. And mainly, it's because we're having more multifamily units as opposed to single-family or duplex units. And again, that's related to the average cost of those units. And then, you're seeing a greater benefit in the streets fund because you're having to provide less streets in theory to serve those units. And so, this is a pretty big change. It looks like it's a scary number for these. One thing to consider, though, is you're almost doubling the number of housing units that are going in alternatives one and two. And so, on a per-unit basis, you're actually reducing costs to serve these units because you're creating more efficiencies of service since they're all sort of centrally located. And so, just something to consider. So, needed capital investment. So, we've heard that there's renewed interest in walkover and urban places from our survey work. We're finding that nationally in our work. It leads, it's leading to demand for infill development. But to support this, you have to also provide amenities that make it livable. So, mixed-use areas need to have residential amenities like residential, single-family neighborhoods that make it attractive and easy to live in. And so, things like improved sidewalks, dog parks, access to green space, things like that are a needed component if you really want to drive infill housing. And then, other things to consider in terms of potential costs is that when you're redeveloping and creating greater intensity of uses in certain parcels in older areas, the existing infrastructure might be old and needs to be replaced or upsized to meet that domain. And so, it's an additional thing you need to consider in certain areas in terms of where you want to prioritize, where these sort of infrastructure issues can crop up and what does the city want to do to try to address these to encourage infill development? So, questions, clarifications, additional information?
Missioners, questions? Oh, okay.
All right. You guys are easy tonight. All right. I think, I think you've heard the summary. Sienna was going to give you an update on our next steps and working towards a possible motion for your next meeting, so.
Just a very quick preview of what's ahead. The fiscal analysis that Matt just presented is the last informational component that you're going to receive before we will be seeking your direction on the key policy choices. So, housing, employment, infill and redevelopment, infrastructure and neighborhoods. In terms of seeking that direction, we are going to be returning to your December eighth, at least at this point in time, Planning Commission meeting and asking you to provide a recommendation on your preferred direction. That will inform the next joint leadership meeting, our fourth joint leadership meeting on December thirteenth. And so, at that meeting with your recommendation and the meeting in place, we'll be looking for direction from both the Planning Commission and City Council at that meeting. And just to kind of wrap it up this evening, all we're looking for from you this evening is an approval of the preliminary analysis evaluating the fiscal impact of the various land use scenarios that Matt presented. And if you have any questions on moving forward, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, thanks very much, Sienna. Thanks, Matt, too, for the presentation. Missioners, questions? Motion? We have our next steps pretty well laid out for us.
Commissioner Johnson, I guess, should I read the motion? Basically, I would move that we approve the preliminary analysis evaluating the fiscal impact of various land use scenarios to support key policy choices for the updated master plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Nowitzki, have a motion and a second on this? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Thanks very much. We'll look forward to seeing you again soon. So, moving on our agenda to public hearings, our first one is item 7.1, which is LDC 17-00018 707-711 Mount Rose Historic Overlay. We'll begin with a presentation from staff, it looks like. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Chair Gower and members of the Planning Commission. Jeff Borcker, Associate Planner, for the record. The project before you tonight is a city-initiated zone change to add the historic landmark overlay designation to the property on the northwest corner of Mount Rose Street and Lander Street. So, there are two structures on the site, 707 and 711 Mount Rose. Both were determined to be historically significant under the criteria outlined in Pardon the estimated date of planning commission, this was used actually to give a presentation to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, but nonetheless, the process is the same. So, essentially, the applicant came in, gave, submitted a nomination to add his property to the local register of historic places. The Historic Resources Commission recommended on the nomination and felt that it was significant. It was forwarded to the city council who designated the local register and initiated the zone change, which is why it's before the commission tonight. And the zone change would essentially finalize the historic overlay and add the historic landmark overlay designation to the property. So, this designation would not cause any impact to the surrounding structures and would only impact the subject property for additional standards should they want to do any exterior improvements. We did receive one resident in opposition because this would allow for an administrative reduction in parking. So, staff agrees with the Historic Resources Commission and the city council that the structures were significant or are significant. And we can make all the zoning map amendment findings. And so, we recommend that Planning Commission recommend approval of the historic overlay designation. I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
Okay, thanks very much, Jeff. Before we get to public comment on this item, I will bring it back to the Commission for disclosures. Commissioner Reno, I'll start with you.
I visited the site and prior to being on the Planning Commission, I was on the Historical Resources Commission. I don't know if that matters, but...
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site and my wife is currently a member of the Historic Resources Commission.
Okay. Commissioner Gower, I visited the site.
Commissioner Hawkins, I visited the site. I do a significant amount of work for the Gustons who are, Melinda's the Vice Chair of the Historic Resource Commission.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site and I believe received an email on this.
Commissioner Nowitzki, I rode to the site and received an email on this.
You always put that in there. So, having done disclosures, we will open it up to public comments. And I do have one public comment card from David Mello, who does not wish to make a statement, at least that's what is checked, but is in favor of the project or the zone change, I should say. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for questions. If there are no questions, discussion or I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes.
And that is, when I read this staff report, and it was prior to getting the email, I felt like through the application and staff report that the applicant tried to open up a business at this address before going forward with the historical application. And when he couldn't make it because of a lack of parking, then he went down the path of the historical route. And if we approve the request as it's brought before us tonight, then the, then the parking becomes of no concern. My question is to staff, and I don't know, Jeff, if you want to address this or send it on to someone else, is there a way of approving the request for the historical landmark and also putting in a clause, a paragraph, a condition, however it can be done, to mandate that parking be approved should a business be opened up at either one of these properties and not just used for residential?
So, there wouldn't need to be a condition. That is actually, parking would have to be approved no matter what if a business were to open.
On-site or street-side?
Both. Because this is within an infill neighborhood, you're allowed a fifty percent of your parking to be located on-street and then fifty percent would have to be on-site. The difficulty with this particular location is the Plumas Neighborhood Plan does not allow parking within the front of the building, which is where the parking spaces would have been located.
Okay.
So, it would have to be in the back of the building. Well, in the back of the exist, or the building where Mr. Mello would like to open up the business location is 711 Mount Rose, which is the more historic of the two properties. So, that would result in the demolition of that structure in order to accommodate that one extra parking space that he needs. And so, the administrator has the ability to grant a reduction in parking if necessary to preserve a historic structure if it has a historic landmark overlay. So, there would be no condition, but nonetheless, parking still has to be approved by staff in order to make sure that a business works.
Okay. So, we're going to, what I hear you saying is that the administrator, if they approve a business, an office business going into this location, that it'll probably, it will be street parking, it will not be on-site parking.
Correct. And so, as I mentioned, fifty percent right now can be accommodated on-street per existing code standards. They have the ability to accommodate additional on-street parking, given their frontage and how their frontage is oriented, but that it can't be accommodated with the pure math of what the code requires. And so, the administrator has the ability to say, okay, you can have this extra parking space on the street in order to support your business so you don't have to tear down that house. So, in reality, you're really reducing for this particular business, which can only be located on the ground floor per the MF30 standards, would only require one additional parking space. And that one additional parking space would be located on the street.
But that business could generate more than one car at a time during business hours. And that street is, that area is already at certain times inundated with traffic. Good for the businesses that are there, they're doing something right, but it's an inconvenience to the neighborhood. And so, although a business based on square footage can require one vehicle for parking regulations, it may draw two or three, four, five vehicles for customers showing up to that business, correct?
You're absolutely right. However, our parking standards are based in a lot of different science and studies and they're based, they're based on a lot of background information. And so, we place a lot of value in how we park certain sites. We don't just say, this is how much you should have. A lot of those are based in various different studies over time.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Missioners, any other questions or discussion on this item? If not, oh, ask for a motion. Commissioner Reno?
Well, I'll just discuss really quick and then I'll make a motion. But I agree with Commissioner Nowitzki on the, it seems like the only reason they're doing all of this is to get another parking or not, to skirt the parking requirement. But I kind of look at it as like, that may be true, but we're also getting them to preserve a building into the future. And I think that's a good thing for the community. So, with that, I can make the findings. But in the case of LDC 17-00018 707-711 Mount Rose Historic Overlay, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approves the zoning map amendment by ordinance. I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion, have a second. Commissioner Hawkins?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowitzki, just for the record, I'll be voting in favor of this simply because of Commissioner Reno's statement he just made. And that was how I, how I came to resolution before the meeting on this agenda item. The two structures, their historical value is worth more than the inconvenience of a space or two. of a space or two on the street. And I, I believe that our administrator would not, and I don't even think our ordinance would allow it, for a business to be there from ten PM to six AM to distract from the residents themselves surrounding this area. So, um, I, I just wanted to state that for the record of why I could make the findings and why I'm voting in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries? Thanks, Jeff. So moving through our public hearing items, um, I didn't mention at the front end of the meeting, but item seven point two, LDC sixteen dash zero 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 six eight Mallard Crossing has been postponed from this meeting, so we will not hear that item. As mentioned at the front of the meeting, item seven point three, LDC sixteen dash zero 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 eight three, Somerset Village Six, um, the public hearing has been continued at this time. We need to hear from there? Okay, so at this time, um, there will not be a public hearing on the item, but we will open it up for public comment. If anyone had a change of mind and wanted to make a public comment at this time, I've seen none, I will close it. Oh. Okay. Yep.
Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group, uh, on behalf of the applicant. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for granting the continuance. Rubicon and the rest of the project team will be happy to continue meeting with any interested people, neighbors, uh, anyone who takes an interest in the project. So we're happy to continue that discussion. Uh, we think it's been productive so far and we'd like to see it all come to a resolution prior to the hearing. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. At this point, we'll close public comment and we'll look forward to hearing that item again next month. We'll move. We need a motion? I did that last time. Okay. It's not an automatic thing. We need to get a motion on this. So motion to continue is what I'm asking for.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, I motion, make a motion to continue the item until, um, do we have a date certain on that, Claudia?
We're going to renotice on that, just to make sure everybody knows exactly what's going on.
At the, uh, renoticing date.
Okay. Think you have a motion?
Commissioner Johnson, I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Oh, motion carries unanimously. Now we will move on to item eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wiskey, we have a meeting next week on the ninth, Washoe County Chambers on Ninth Street.
Excellent.
Hopefully they have it put back together because I saw it the other day and it's completely torn apart and we'll look differently when we, uh, readjourn there.
Nice new sidewalk, though, that they've put in there.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Uh, item number nine, staff announcements.
Claudia Hansen, planning manager, just two updates from city council. Um, last night, the Stations Casino was approved, um, at, uh, with a vote of five-two. And also at council yesterday, uh, city council accepted a grant that we received from, um, State Historic Preservation Office to conduct a context for the university area. Keep you posted on that. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Item ten, commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. No? None? Okay. Item eleven, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or any general public comment item. Seeing no public comments, um, I will close that public comment item and move on to item twelve, which is adjournment, and I'll ask for a motion.
I move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.